K N U S Denver, sleep deprived and heavily caffeinated.
All right, let's do this then.
This is the Jeff and Bill Show.
I don't understand.
I don't agree with that. They don't always agree, but hey, at least they have coffee.
Coffee, coffee, coffee.
And each other.
Seven AM at the Mile High City on a Wednesday, September seventeenth, two thousand twenty-five. Good morning, Denver, Colorado. You've tuned into the Jeff and Bill Show, News Talk seven ten K N U S. I'm your co-host Jeff Hunt, along with Bill Thor, bringing you the freshest insights, hottest takes from the right, left, and center. You may have seen this news yesterday, just crazy. Out in Elizabeth, a slate of candidates running for school board. Not that controversial of an office, running for school board, had all of their signs spray painted with Nazi swastikas, someone graffiti'd all over them. And in light of the fact that Charlie Kirk's death was just a week ago today, is there any effort by the left to try to tone down the rhetoric? Doesn't seem to be the case. They cut fences, went into fields, and the radical left spray painted Nazi swastikas over the signs of these school board candidates. All these signs, all they say is Conservatives for Kids, Mary Powell, David Fletcher, Nicole Hunt, Elizabeth School Board. And they went out to deface those signs. Is there any desire from the left to tone down the rhetoric? I don't think so, but we're going to talk with the school board candidates themselves, who are making the news with this unfortunate incident, right after news and coming with Blake Olson. Bill, I lost the screen there. You're gonna have to pull it up. We could go straight to Bill too, or Blake. Yeah, all right, Blake, we're about to get some issues, so we're gonna go straight to you, Blake.
All right, you want me to do the music?
All yours.
Boom, 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 boom. Thanks, man.
There you go. Blake Olson with the news. Here we go.
All right, good morning. It's Wednesday, forty-seven and clear in Denver, expecting a high of seventy-one today. This portion of the news sponsored by Pastor Camp Heating and Air Conditioning at three oh three seven 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 one two three four to learn more about special savings opportunities on Lennox equipment. Our top story, the Fed is widely expected to announce an interest rate cut today. Most analysts are leaning toward the central bank, bringing down its benchmark rate for the first time since two thousand twenty-four. We could see an additional two rate cuts before the end of the year. Jeffco Sheriff's Office releasing details about the Evergreen shooting on Tuesday.
The Jefferson County Sheriff's Office says the first officers on scene arrived at the school two and a half minutes after calls started flooding nine one one. In a statement, the office says the shooter unloaded about twenty shots, first inside the school, hitting the first victim, then outside after he left the school, crossed the football field, and shot a second victim. Both victims are still hospitalized. I'm Connor Shreve.
Of course, that was a week ago today, and also at about the same time Charlie Kirk was assassinated.
The defendant knowingly created a great risk of death to another individual other than Charlie Kirk and the defendant. Notice conviction of this offense may carry the death penalty pursuant to Utah Code seventy-six three dash two oh seven point seven, a mandatory term of imprisonment for life without parole or an indeterminate term of not less than twenty-five years, that may be for life.
Tyler Robinson appeared in court and has been charged with Charlie's murder. The president and vice president will speak at Charlie's memorial service on Sunday in Glendale, Arizona, at State Farm Stadium, and will also feature remarks from Erica Marco Rubio, R F K Junior, and Pete Hegseth. Utah County DA, he read the text messages from Robinson to his transgender boyfriend after the assassination.
The roommate. Police interviewed Robinson's roommate, a biological male who was involved in a romantic relationship with Robinson. The roommate told police that the roommate received messages from Robinson about the shooting, and he did provide those messages to police. On September tenth, two thousand twenty-five, the roommate received a text message from Robinson which said, "Drop what you're doing. Look under my keyboard." The roommate looked under the keyboard and found a note that stated, quote, "I had the opportunity to take out Charlie Kirk, and I'm going to take it."
There was a candlelight vigil on campus at the University of Colorado, Colorado Springs, on Tuesday that drew hundreds to honor Charlie. The event was organized by the Campus Chapter of Turning Point USA, and officials said the gathering remained peaceful. These students at Barrington High School in Rhode Island showed up at the school board meeting.
Blake Olson.
And thank you very much. And they want the teacher who celebrated Kirk's death to be fired. They said they don't feel safe in the class with the teacher. Now, it's on social media, so you're gonna hear some really bad music underneath, but you see the students in front of the school board.
And as the people of the youth, we've decided to come up and give our perspective on the subject, considering it is our teacher and one of the people that have about our futures. No matter what anyone says to me, I will never stand for violence, especially if a man was publicly murdered in front of his wife, one of his children, thousands of students, and other bystanders. Charlie was not a racist. He did not hurt anyone sexually, and he did not kill anyone. Therefore, this was an unjustified cause of death.
Good, good for the kids. All three of them talked about how they do not feel safe with this teacher teaching them about hate and cheering on the assassination.
Thought he proved how tough he was with his words that he studied ahead of time. What a piece of garbage. This is what happens. I'm curious if we're gonna want to take guns away now from who will inevitably be the white man who shot and killed him. Bye, Charlie.
Wow, what a great guy. What a great teacher. Well, a recent ICE operation at a Frisco restaurant results in a heated confrontation between agents and some locals. A video shows the locals shouting at agents and obstructing their ability to leave, with one man appearing to spit in their direction. A spokesman for the agency said ICE was there on a criminal search warrant tied to an HSI investigation. D J T and First Lady Melania attending a state banquet hosted by King Charles at Windsor Castle today. The visit includes a carriage procession with King Charles. And the hearing with FBI Director Cash Patel continues today, and this one really helped me laugh. Lazy Maisy Hirono from Hawaii, remember her?
You know, one question I had is that you are now requiring applicants to be able to do a certain kind of pull-ups, which a lot of women cannot because of physiological differences. Are you requiring these kinds of pull-ups?
We are requiring a physical program at B F T C at Quantico because FBI agents carrying guns in the field have to chase down bad guys and do really hard work. The physical fitness standards of those agents are being appropriately assessed.
So are you requiring these kinds of pull-ups?
We are requiring everybody to pass the eighteen eleven standards at B F T C. If you want to chase down a bad guy and put him in handcuffs, you better be able to do a pull-up.
Amen to that. Oh, God, she's so bad. Let me hear ten more seconds of her.
The reason I ask is that there are concerns about whether or not being able to do these kinds of harsh pull-ups is really required of FBI agents.
Doing one pull-up is not harsh, and there are always medical exemptions to that.
She's gravely concerned. Wow, these are the people who don't know what a woman is, but yet they say there's a difference between men and women, which there are. Forty-five in Littleton, forty-six in Arvada, forty-seven in Denver. Jeff and Billy continue. Blake Olson, News Talk seven ten K N U S.
We'll be on the backside of low pressure today, so it's still gonna be a little cool, unsettled, and there still will be a few showers and thunderstorms around before better weather moves in Thursday and Friday. Highs upper sixties, lows seventies, a few scattered showers and thunderstorms through evening, lows tonight, upper forties, partly cloudy in Miles, low to mid-seventies Thursday, seventy-five to eighty Friday. Weather is a service of L and L Heating and Air Conditioning for quick, trustworthy, and dependable service. Call L and L Heating and Air Conditioning at seven two zero eight five one sixteen ninety-one. Visit them online at bestdenverhvac.com. You'll be comfortable with L and L meteorologist on day on the seven ten K N U S Weather Center.
Welcome back to the Jeff and Bill Show. You may have seen those images coming out of Elizabeth, Colorado, which is a small rural community southeast of Denver. A slate of school board candidates, conservatives running, says Conservatives for Kids across the top, and then says Mary, uh, Mary Powell, David Fletcher, and Nicole Hunt underneath it, and then it says Elizabeth School Board. Not that controversial of a sign, just standard, small-town, rural Colorado, people running for school board. And then the left has come in and they cut down fences to get to these signs out in these fields and graffiti'd Nazi swastikas on these signs, which is terrible in itself, but one week removed from the assassination of Charlie Kirk for simply wanting to go talk and communicate. The left, filled with hatred, killing Charlie Kirk, now destroying signs, no desire to unify around notions of patriotism, of trying to improve our communities, tone down the rhetoric, none of that. You're not seeing any of that. And we are now joined live in studio by those three school board members. You can see them on X, on YouTube, if you go there. Mark Crowley with the camera. We have Nicole Hunt, Mary Powell, David Fletcher with us live in studio. Thanks for joining us today.
Thank you.
So let's get these microphones close to you there. You get the sign, and I'll start with you, Nicole Hunt. You get the, you get the images sent to you. What was the first thing that went through your mind yesterday when you saw that?
Uh, you know, I was just really disturbed. I thought to myself, gosh, this is such a symbol of hate. And in a, in a community like Elizabeth School District, it just wasn't what I expected. I expected, you know, tolerance at the very least, but civility. It's a, it's a community that loves each other, that helps each other out whenever there are problems. And so to see that really just shook me because I thought, oh, my gosh, not in this community, not in our community.
Yeah, right. I mean, it's a small rural community, I think a total of about thirty thousand. Is that the size of Elizabeth or Albert County?
Yeah, Albert, that's the size, about the size of Albert County, but Elizabeth is even smaller, so.
Right, so not a place where you get a lot of heated political debate all the time and big protests, so this takes place overnight. You see all of the, the swastikas end up on these, um, on these signs, and it's a very jarring signal, right?
Yeah, I mean, it made me think twice. I thought to myself, my goodness, this is a symbol of hate, and in this community, are we safe?
Yeah, yeah. Joining us well is David Fletcher, Mary Powell. David, people start text messaging you, and you see these images coming. What was the first thing that went through your mind? Pull that mic close to you.
Yeah, I think the first thing that went through my mind is they, they hated Christ, they will hate you. And the, I've been a Christian most of my adult life, and the, as you read through history, the, they will demonize you for your beliefs. And they have hated us forever. I mean, even down to the first martyr, Stephen. And that's what we have to look forward to as Christians sometimes. They, and I mean, Charlie, just a week after Charlie Kirk. I mean, we should, if we, if conservatives don't know now that not only, it's, it's not just that they, they dislike us, it's not just that they want to de-bank us or take away our jobs like they did mine, they want us dead. That, that, and that's, I mean, we've, we saw that last week in living color. And so, yeah, I think, you know, the first thing that went through my mind was just that, well, here it comes. And, and I knew stepping into this arena, I mean, we were already being sued by the ACLU, a little, little district here in the, in southeast of Denver, and I knew that they were coming for us.
Wow. Mary, how about you? You saw those images, I'm sure they start to pop up on your phone, people sending you text messages. We were driving to school, for instance, and we saw your name, your name with a swastika spray painted over it, one week removed from the assassination of a conservative leader.
Yes. Well, I, I got the first text message about one set of our signs from our group, and so I was kind of like just stunned. And then honestly, it was about eight fifteen, and all of a sudden our doorbell rang, and it was the sheriff. And I was like, oh, well, that's interesting. I know that's not the typical first thing in the morning thing at my house. And so he came in and he told us that another one had been reported on another road, so another set of signs had been defaced, and that particular one had a business owner who was Jewish, so that's why they were especially perturbed. These swastikas that were spray painted across all of our signs, it was one big, large one that was meant to cover our names, and in black spray paint across our names. And my, I was, I was disturbed. I was, I was just kind of in shock, but I was also very sad because I thought, you know, this, this is not really representative of the majority of our community. Our community is very conservative, and our, our community is very, has, has very conservative ideals, and it's, it's a, it's a loud minority who is doing this, and I was just very sad that they are trying to cancel us, basically.
Here's how I saw it. We've seen a series of posts on places like Blue Sky that said, "Let's go after Ben Shapiro next. Let's go after J K Rowling next. Let's go after Matt Walsh next." Because what the left has done is said, if you're a conservative, especially if you're a Christian conservative, you are a fascist, you are a Nazi, okay? That becomes the moral justification, and it's one step next to violence. It's the step right before you get to violence. So what I saw was the left going, "You guys are fascists. You guys are Nazis. These are the ones we need to target next." And a week removed from violence, I didn't see Jared Polis post anything condemning this. I didn't see anybody else post any, any of our current political leadership posting anything condemning this. So you all are small-town, rural candidates facing a direct attack and a labeling by the left that you all should be next. How does that make you feel?
Yeah, I mean, I'll, I'll say that it's a very dehumanizing way to, to, to talk to people about disagreements. There might be some in the community who disagree with, you know, our, our stance in the ACLU lawsuit, or things that we make decisions about, since the three of us are current sitting school board members for the Elizabeth School District. But when you label people and then you target them with that type of hate, it dehumanizes them, and it's truly un-American. The American way is through civility, it's through discussion, it's the Charlie Kirk way. You talk about the ideas that you disagree on, and maybe you can change minds, maybe you can't, but at the very least, you have a civil discussion. And the left can't do that. Many people in the left, they just resort to taking advantage of fear and taking advantage of hate, and they use that to try to silence others. And I think that's one message they were trying to send, is you need to be intimidated because we're gonna come after you. And for me, that's not gonna work, but, but I know that for a lot, and I have to say, you know, one of, so we had eight banners that were touched, that were vandalized by these folks, and two of them were actually in the front yard of a wonderful family in the Elizabeth School District. And I messaged with that family yesterday and just said, hey, thank you so much, and I'm so sorry that you've been targeted in this way. And they said, you know what? We're gonna clean those signs, we're gonna keep them up there. And then they added a sign that said, you know, "Pray Without Ceasing." And it, and they said, you know, "We're taught in the Bible to be bold, to be strong, and to be courageous, and so we're not gonna be intimidated by these tactics." And I was really impressed and just so inspired by their reaction, and I think that's indicative of what a lot of Elizabeth School District families feel.
We're talking with the three candidates that are running for school board in Elizabeth School District, that's southeast of Denver, it's a rural county, and they had their signs which say Conservative for Kids, Mary Powell, David Fletcher, Nicole Hunt, Elizabeth School Board, not controversial signs, you're not a wild right-wingers making statements all the time against people, you're just small-town people running for school board. And the signs were covered with graffiti, a black swastika spray painted over these signs. These perpetrators cut fences to get to these signs. This is about intimidating. And I guess what, what bothers me about it is it many things, but one of them is the effort to try to force people out of the public square and civic engagement, right? David, Mary, you're not right-wingers with Twitter accounts, you know, trying to get debates going and all that stuff. This was an effort to keep people that, I mean, you work another job, David. Mary, you do this in a volunteer capacity? You're not getting paid to be school board leaders. You do it because you love your community, right? You haven't been out there targeting the left, burning pride flags, none of that stuff. You did this because you're, you're common people that just want to make their communities better, and you're facing this type of intimidation. Talk to me about that.
Well, you are absolutely right. I mean, this, this does feel like an intimidation tactic, but it's, but one of the other things that kind of crossed through my mind when I saw this was, do you know what Nazi means? Because like, we are like the furthest thing from a Nazi that you can get. And so, I mean, it's like they, the left tends to use slurs and name-calling as their tactic, but if you really were to ask them, what do you think that means? Why are you calling me that? I don't think that they could answer necessarily. And as you said, I mean, I'm, I, I don't have another job, I'm retired, but I, I, I work multiple jobs that don't, so all that means for me is I don't get paid for the multiple jobs I do. But, you know, I'm out there because, and I became part of the school board because there were things that I was concerned about coming into our school district, and I wanted to be sure that they weren't in there to begin with when I first came in in two thousand twenty-three. So, you know, that's what we've been working on, and we've been trying to make it so that our students are coming out as useful citizens, and we, we're working on that. And, you know, it's not a fast process, it doesn't happen, you get in there and the next day, everything is perfect. It doesn't happen that way. But we are working on it, we have some really good things going on and in place that are improving things, and we are excited about them, and I, I just don't see how that's a bad thing.
Right, right. Well, I mean, could you, you see some making the argument on social media that, well, Charlie Kirk went out there, he was, you know, engaging directly, and that's why he was shot, and tensions are high. What, what I want to point out here is that the left isn't just going after major political figures, they want to get you out of the process. You, the person who works a nine to five, you that just wants to volunteer on the school board on a regular basis, they want you out of the process as well. It is total control, total domination, we control every aspect of it, and we won't play and fight the, the way everybody else does, which means we go and make our case and, and debate and, and have an election, we're gonna try to intimidate you. David Fletcher, are you gonna be intimidated by this? You're, you're a Navy guy, aren't you?
Yeah, I'm a retired naval officer, yeah, I'm not, I'm not afraid of these people.
Yeah, why not?
We have, this is all they got. They can, I mean, they killed Charlie Kirk, and because this was always about Christ, it is now bigger than ever. He, he has, I just heard somebody said he had like twenty-eight million followers to all his social media accounts since his death. So this is, this is bigger than them. If all they can do is kill me, that's, that's all they can do. And, but all of this will live on long after me. And, yeah, the, I, I think that's one of the things that is disturbing, is that, you know, I, I've served my country, you know, what does this person do that went and painted swastikas? Like, I, I've served my country for twenty years in the Navy, retired, out here to the quiet life. And, and here I, and here I am. I, I saw a need on the school board to make a difference in the community where I live, which I haven't really gotten a chance to do. I mean, when you're deploying, you know, nine months out of a year, you don't really get to serve your community. And here I am trying to serve my community, and some jack wagon wants to run around and, and paint swastikas, I don't, they don't even know what that means. I mean, I have a master's degree in national security, which basically is a history of war, and the, it's hilarious to think that we are fascists, that we are Nazis. I mean, they, they don't even know what that word means. They, they have no idea.
But it becomes the, the foundation for violence.
Yes, absolutely. They have to do it, right? They have to demonize us.
And justify.
Yes, right.
I mean, you see, you see the comments coming out about the assassin, Charlie Kirk's assassin, where he goes, "I had to stop the hate," right? So you put those people in those categories, I gotta, and you say, a rational person goes, you're gonna stop someone you believe that's hateful with a bullet?
Yeah.
Don't you think you're acting hateful? But they, they, they never connect that. It becomes a moral crusade for them to rid the world of Charlie Kirk so they feel better. And when they've done that, whether it's Charlie Kirk or Jews, like you see up in Boulder where they light them on fire, when you put people into that oppressor versus oppressed mindset, fascist, communist, you lay the groundwork for violence, and that's my concern here with Elizabeth, a small rural community. I mean, you guys have one high school.
Yeah.
That's how big this district is, and they're laying the groundwork for further violence, which concerns me. And it concerned the superintendent, because you're not just candidates, you're existing school board members. So the superintendent of Elizabeth School District, looking at his own board members being labeled Nazis in a justification to bring violence against them, put out this statement. He writes, "It is deeply disturbing to learn that in the wake of the recent assassination of a political figure, three of our current school board members have had their election signs vandalized and marked with Nazi symbols. Our school district will not stand for this hate and is calling on local law enforcement to identify who is responsible and prosecute them to the fullest extent of the law. Anyone with information as to who would commit these acts of vandalism and hatred is encouraged to contact the Albert County Sheriff's Office. The lack of civility in this world, and obviously now in our community, is extremely sad. Such stereotypes are very serious and place individuals who volunteer to serve their community in greater danger. It's been further reported that campaign signs have also been taken out of yards around the community. All of this sets a very poor example for our children in the community. Anyone who runs for elected office deserves respect regardless of the thoughts or beliefs they hold. We must ensure that we create an atmosphere where our focus is on ideas and not hatred and personal attacks." Superintendent Dan Snowberger, Elizabeth School District. Are the problems we're facing with violence, with calling people fascists, Nazis, and creating that framework of oppressor versus oppressed, and then political violence stemming from all that, is that rooted in an educational failure? Nicole Hunt.
You know, I think that it is indicative of an ideological perspective that has started to, you know, reach our society like a cancer, and I think it gets all areas, right? It's hit a lot of the college-age kids, we've seen it hit the mass public a lot through social media, through chat rooms, but we've also seen that type of, you know, divisive ideology seeping into the public schools. And so it is important that we call that out. And so it is important that we call that out, not only as parents, but you know, as, as engaged citizens. That's not the America that any of us want to live in. We want civil, civil dialogue. And you know, I think the point that superintendent Snowberger makes here, which by the way, I want to say thank you to him for, for releasing that statement. Um, is so important. We are setting an example for the students. And I wrote, you know, when I shared on social media through my page about what had happened, you know, and I felt this really to my core. I wrote that it might've been our signs that were targeted, but it's the hearts and the minds of the kids that they are after. And so to me, this is about standing in the gap. Like this is, there's the woke ideologi- ideologists who want to. Uh, push this doctrine onto our kids. And then there's kids on the other side. And for me, I'd much rather be the target of it and protect the kids. Um, that said, you know, I, I don't want to see this happening in our community. I don't want to see our kids exposed to this. Many of these banners, which by the way. Are eight feet long and four feet tall. They are large banners. They're not just yard signs. They're big banners. Many of these banners were up across the street from the high school where kids were literally being taken to school or driving to school. And they passed a lot of our banners on the way into school that had the swastika signs on them. So you know, I would say more than just making. Making us feel like, man, what kind of a community is this where this could happen? I, I think that it probably was frightening to the kids too. And it's conversations that we need to have with our kids about what it means to dehumanize, to use this kind of hate ideology that could potentially lead to violence.
And it's tearing at the, at the fabric of what we're trying to do with this country. Um, we don't have a common history. We don't have a common sense of where we're going anymore. Look at the Senator Tim Kaine, I think it was, that does not believe that our rights come from God. So you're sitting there going, okay. Well, that's in the foundational documents of our nation, right? So if we're not getting that right. Then we're clearly don't know where else we're going to go. Cause what kind of nation are we going to build? Um, so all of this seems for me to stem from getting education wrong. When I go down and I go attend these major protests and these leftists and the anger and the vitriol that's there. And calling somebody a fascist and a Nazi, and then not knowing where our rights come from. W- w- we're not on the same page as to what kind of nation we're building. From my perspective, that stems from a failure in education. You guys are on a school board. Talk about that, David.
I would say it's not a failure. If you look at it from their point of view, it's, this is, this is very successful. The, they have been, that they want to get the children away from their parents. They want to divide. They want to make sure that they can have unfettered access to a child. So that they can tell them, hey, Bobby, I think you're a girl. So that they can help. Divide the family so they can divide the community because that's what Marxists do. And uh, the, that we, they hate us because we believe in parents' rights. That your child should leave our school with the same values that they came with. And that the parent has the right to make sure that that, that child is raised the way they want and not the school. And so that's, they have done this for a hundred years. They, the long march through the, the institutions. That's, it's, we're here. We've arrived. We've arrived at the, at the place where they have our children and we are taking it back. I mean, we've seen this. I mean, we, during COVID, we saw, you know, in Virginia, I, I came from Northern Virginia. I, I, I was. In that school districts that are the, at the center of, you know, the Matt Walsh and everybody else. The, so you s- I saw that there. And we were tired out here because we were like, oh, let's get away from that. And here we are. We're right in the middle of it again. Um, and so the, I think that, I mean, they're, they're not attacking anybody else. Why are they attacking us? That's, I mean, that's what you kind of have to look at this. They're attacking us because we want these children to be educated. We want them to be good citizens. We want them to love their parents, their community, to love God. That, that would be great. Um, and so that's why they're attacking us and not our opponents, right?
That's David Fletcher. He's joined with by Mary Powell, Nicole Hunt. They're running for school board in Elizabeth. They're currently on the school board. They're part of a slate called the Conservatives for Kids and they had their signs yesterday or uh, two nights ago now. Uh, vandalized. Um, black swastikas spray painted over these big signs all throughout the county. It's an act of intimidation. And part of the intimidation that we could guess is, I mean, we don't, we don't know who the perpetrator is. But is go, is tied possibly to a lawsuit with the ACLU. And we'll tell you more about what this lawsuit's all about, why progressive organizations like the ACLU are targeting. This little school, rural school district and could it all be connected? We'll continue. You're listening to the Jeff and Bill Show.
This is Denver's talk leader, News Talk 710 Can U S?
Welcome back to the Jeff and Bill Show. Live in studio with us is a slate of candidates from the Conservatives for Kids. Conservativesforkids.com, conservativesforkids.com. They're running for school board in Elizabeth, Colorado. Mary Powell, David Fletcher, Nicole Hunt. They have these signs, eight foot signs out through the small little rural community. And somebody spray painted across the center of them, black swastikas, not just on one, not just on two, but on signs throughout the county. It was a targeted attack. They cut fences to get to these signs. This is an effort to intimidate. A group of conservatives that are not super outspoken. They're not confronting people. They're simply wanting to serve their communities. And leftists following the assassination of Charlie Kirk a week from today, a week from, uh, it was a week ago from today. Not toning down the rhetoric, not trying to build unity, not try to come together, not even really trying to police their own. Are out there intimidating. And from my perspective. Telling the community, these people are next. Mary Powell, David Fletcher, Nicole Hunt, because simply for being a conservative and stepping up. You are next on the lists for violence, for intimidation? It's sickening and it's sad. They join us live in studio to give us their perspective. Um, you guys have also made national news around a lawsuit. We don't know the direct motive, but we can assume that it's probably tied to that lawsuit as well. You're battling against the ACLU with regards to some books. Tell us about this lawsuit. Mary Powell.
Well, we um, we as a school district, uh, decided that um, it was time for us to. Follow our actual policy and know that what was in our curriculum and know what was in our libraries. And this hadn't been done. This hadn't really been curated for. At forever, as far as we know, really, there was very loose things around it. And, and because of things that were going on around the country with parents coming in, talking to. School boards and saying, my, my child got this book. And they would try to read pieces of it into the record and. And they were stopped because of the language, not appropriate, right? Well then, why is it in the library? Well, we had the opposite situation where we wanted to know ourselves what was in the library. And so we began a process of, of. Curating our library collection. And we've also, uh, you know, curated and chosen uh, various curricula. But uh, as far as the library goes, we came up with a process and we went through. And we also decided to kind of do what we call a sensitive list. And um, some books were. Books that we felt a parent should know what their child was getting. And so we created a process for these certain books. They were tagged. They were flagged, I guess you want to say. And then if a child were to uh, take out one of those books, the parent would get an email. The parent had full choice of whether to ignore that, whether to say, Johnny, I'd like to see that and, and I don't think it's appropriate. I want you to take it back. Or Johnny, let's sit down and read this together. Whatever they wanted to do, but they were aware of it. And that is. One of our very important things is that we want to make sure that parents know what's going on with their children. We are, we try to be very transparent. With uh, with what's going on with our kids. But as we were doing this review, we came across some books that were just sort of. Beyond any, any level of age appropriateness. Uh, definitely did not support our curriculum. And so we uh, we voted to remove 19 books, one of which. At the time we found out was, had been taken out and never returned. So it was really 18 books we took off the shelves. And we did get sued by the ACLU and right before Christmas last year. So um, so we've been dealing with that for a while. Um, we are, we have taken it to, we lost at the preliminary injunction level. Uh, and so the books are currently back on the shelves because of that order. But it is in, we have taken it to the 10th Circuit and so it is in there right now. Uh, we are doing discovery in the district court. So that is kind of what's going on in the process. Um, but these books were just, um, they were, I could have gone my whole life and not read what was in these books. They're absolutely not appropriate. And I'm not just talking about the F word here and there. I am talking about graphic, graphic sexual detail, graphic things like. Uh, how to commit suicide or why to commit suicide because of sexual abuse, uh, how to shoot up a school, how to take drugs, different things, uh, incest.
Yeah, one, one describes an incestual encounter between a father and a daughter in graphic detail. And it's so bad, we would lose our FCC license if I read it on air.
Exactly.
So I mean, and. The, you, you, the ACLU is making the argument that you guys took this out because of race or sexual identity or anything like that. No, no, it's so bad that your own email filters don't allow you to send the content. I can't read it on air. And the ACLU wants to force these books on your kids. They think they have the right to do it and they're suing you for the scandal, the scandal of simply doing your job as a school board. And reviewing the books that are in the library.
Right. And these, people say we banned these books and that is the furthest thing from the truth. We have said, we don't want, they, we are not going to waste our educational library limited space on books like that. They do not support our curriculum and they are age inappropriate. We're not going to waste space on those. Um, but we have said, you know, parents, if, if, if it's okay with you for your children to read these things, they're in the public library. They're on Amazon. You can go get them. And if you wanted to, you could even let your child bring them into school, read them to themselves. Don't share them with other people. But they could even bring them into the school and read them. So that doesn't sound like book banning to me.
Right. Well, and it's a big case going to the 10th Circuit. They need your help and support, by the way, because. Uh, you guys don't have a massive legal fund. You're not a Cherry Creek School District or a Denver Public School District. Where you have this massive legal fund. You're like, well, we're going to defend quality education for our kids against these leftist special interest groups. Because we're going to put kids first and we got this big bank account. No, you guys are relying upon good lawyers that are volunteering some of their time. But also lawyers that need to be paid for their services because they're highly talented. ElizabethSchoolDistrict.org, ElizabethSchoolDistrict.org. If you want to support. These great school board members that are fighting against this agenda. I think you, I think we're seeing how it's all coming together. Right? You've got the ACLU. You've got leftist organizations that are, that have picked you guys out. And said, we're going to force our content upon you. You guys said, no, they're willing to take you all the way to court to do it. Now you'll win. But it's going to take a lot of resources, time and battles to get there. Meanwhile, you're trying to run for reelection and Nazi slogans end up painted all over your stuff as an effort to intimidate you. I'm not saying the ACLU did that. There's no evidence of that, but. Clearly you're, what I would say, over the target. You, you guys are getting the flak. Because you're actually delivering what's right and leftist groups can't stand it. Well, we're going to continue this conversation. Mary Powell, David Fletcher, Nicole Hunt, live in studio. You're listening to the Jeff and Bill Show.
This is Denver's talk leader, News Talk 710 Can U S?
Welcome back to the Jeff and Bill Show. Live in studio with us is Mary Powell, David Fletcher, Nicole Hunt. Yes, Nat, Nicole Hunt, she's my wife. And she is part of a slate. ConservativesForKids.com, ConservativesForKids.com. They have signs up all throughout a small rural community, Elizabeth, Colorado. Beautiful little community. And I'm, I'm afraid I'm giving away the secrets, but you're always welcome to be there. But it is a beautiful rural community, small town feel, one high school. Okay? They have signs up. They're not controversial signs. They're not doing anything that welcomes intimidation. But somebody cut fencing into cattle pastures all over the county, spray painted a big black swastika all over their signs. And a week removed from the assassination of Charlie Kirk, the message being sent, these are Nazis. And in my mind, that puts them on the list. We've seen it on a number of social media accounts. Well, we're gonna go after Ben Shapiro next. We're gonna go after J.K. Rowling next. The left violent, I've experienced it. I've been assaulted. Now putting these people on a list in an effort to intimidate them. So I'm gonna ask you directly, are you intimidated? Did this work? Are you gonna back out? Are you gonna back out against the ACLU? Was this vandalism against your signs working?
No.
No. I'd rather die, to be honest. I'd rather die than back out. So.
And I'd say absolutely not. In fact, I have more resolve than ever before to stand in the gap between this radical ideology that wants to come after the hearts and the minds of the kids.
Yeah, because you're not being targeted because you're just local conservatives in the community. You're targeted because you have influence over the direction of the kids' education.
That's right. We're targeted because there are beliefs and opinions that we have that they will not accept. And I would say, you know, when it comes to, for example, this lawsuit against the ACLU, I do believe that the ACLU is using our school district as an example, that if they can be successful forcing their indoctrinated views onto our community, because that decision to remove books was a community-based decision. We had parents, community members, a variety of people who came in and gave recommendations. And if they can use us as an example, that you don't get to set your own standards for the type of curriculum and supporting curriculum you have in your school, they're gonna use that example to try to take down a ton of other school districts who don't believe the way that they believe.
It's been a hard week for a lot of conservatives. We watched the assassination of an influential Christian conservative figure in public. The whole nation saw it. But I think what's important for everybody to understand, listening to this show, is that the intimidation of conservatives doesn't just stop with big names. It's about little rural school districts. It's about pushing that agenda. And if you try to stop it in any way, they're gonna try to intimidate you. It's not working. It's not gonna stop Mary Powell. It's not gonna stop David Fletcher. It's not gonna stop Nicole Hunt. They're gonna keep going. But their support that they need from our community to call out this type of behavior, say it's unacceptable. We don't want to live in an America like this. Right or left, to be intimidated like this is not right. It needs to be called out by our elected officials. Grateful that Dan Snowberger, Superintendent of Elizabeth School District, is calling this out because you're not only candidates, you're actual existing school board members being threatened and intimidated by leftists. I don't think they came from this community. I'll be honest. My guess is, once we learn more from the police, you're gonna see that this probably came from somebody outside the community that traveled into it. But I could be wrong. Go to ConservativesForKids.com, ConservativesForKids.com to learn more about Mary Powell, David Fletcher, Nicole Hunt, and what they're trying to do in Elizabeth. We'll continue. You're listening to the Jeff and Bill Show.
We are Denver's talk leader. This is News Talk 710 KNUS.